Before we begin our agenda, we have a presentation by the first Deputy Commissioner at the Department of Design and Construction on Design Build.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Chair, Commissioners. Good to be here. As was mentioned, I’m Jamie Springer from the Department of Design and Construction. DDC, as you know, is the Design and Construction Manager for approximately $2 billion a year in city infrastructure and public facilities projects across the five boroughs. We’ll be working as part of an interagency team under the leadership of the Mayor’s Office and the Mayor’s Office of Criminal Justice to deliver the four proposed borough-based jail facilities for the entities that will operate them, namely the Department of Correction, Correctional Health Services, as well as many other stakeholders across and outside of city government. I’m joined today by a couple of folks that I’ll mention. First is Rebecca Klauff, who is the Associate Commissioner running the Borough-Based Jails Design and Delivery Program for DDC. She’s in the process of putting a team together to get that delivery done. And we also have recently brought on a program management consultant, a joint venture of AECOM and Hill Engineering, to assist us in this, what is a very significant effort that will require a lot of work in a short period of time. So Beverly Pryor is here with us. She will give her own background, but she’s a registered architect, serves as program manager for us, and has a lot of experience getting justice-based facilities built across the country. And there are a number of others here, including the Mayor’s Office of Criminal Justice is here if there are questions related to the ULP application and other issues. So what we were asked to do was to come and give an update on the implementation side of the Borough-Based Jails Program, and particularly starting to answer the question of how we achieve design excellence through design build. So just to sort of give the context before we launch in, as you’re aware, the city intends to replace the jail facilities on Rikers Island with a smaller, safer, and fairer system that is borough-based, but that focuses on solving the challenging problems, leading New Yorkers into the criminal justice system in a very new way, in a very updated way, even while recognizing that the population in need of detention services is drastically declining due to policy and other changes. Of course, the Commission currently has an application before it for the construction of those four borough-based facilities. In the meantime, DDC is separately getting organized to deliver these facilities, and so that’s what we wanted to talk to you about today. DDC has authorization on behalf of the city, received by the state legislature during last year’s budget session, to construct the borough-based jail facilities using the design-build method of procurement and delivery. This is a new approach for the city. We’re very excited to have this authorization. It is not new, however, to the state or to the country. In fact, it’s in use, as you’ll see in a few minutes, across New York State, in New York City, by New York State, and is in use in 49 other states. Basically, design build means that we’re able to commission a single integrated team to undertake the steps of designing and building a project with us as their client, rather than the traditional method that DDC and the city are authorized for, the low-bid method or design-bid-build method, which really limits our ability to deliver effectively. There are a number of advantages, as described on the slide, which we’re intending to take advantage of. First of all, we avoid the friction that’s caused by having to fully design a project before a contractor gets involved. So there’s enormous amounts of inefficiency or friction that emerge when our designer doesn’t have the ability to work in an integrated way with the contractor, or when the contractor really is only coming on the scene after fully designing a project and the project is bid. The changes have to get made at that point if there are any issues, and that’s where you start to encounter change orders and slowdowns and so on. We’re able to avoid all of that friction, most of that friction, with design build. We also, very importantly, transfer some of the risk in any construction project to the design builder entity, which means that we get schedule and cost efficiencies that I think we can all acknowledge we desperately need as a city government trying to deliver infrastructure and public facilities. And then lastly, we get access to innovation, taking advantage of best practices from across the country in building more humane criminal justice facilities in this case. And we’re already seeing that we’re getting organized to take advantage of that innovation and those best practices in the way that we’re communicating with the industry in standing up this program. One need for coordination that comes out of having design build for delivery of the jails is aligning this work with the typical approvals that occur during ULP. So typically, a project has been partially designed when it comes to you during ULP. In design build, excuse me, the integrated contractor, the design builder, isn’t on board until after ULP, and that’s when design services commence. But we’re aware that design is certainly too important to wait until after ULP to begin thinking about it. So some of the measures that we’ve taken, I’ll come back to in a second, but first I just wanted to describe that we’ve established a program timeline for implementation, of course, subject to the approval of the ULP application. This program includes the procurement of the design builders who will finalize design and construct projects. That procurement is roughly slated to take place over the next year and a half. It also, as you can see, I’m not sure if I have a pointer here, but maybe not. It also, as you can see, has a number of design input opportunities, as has been described to you previously by the Chair. There is review ongoing of the design work by the Public Design Commission, and we’ll be providing updates to the Chair of the Planning Commission periodically throughout the design phase, who will, of course, be providing those updates to you. And then, of course, there will be ongoing communication during, excuse me, design and construction of the project. To come back to the issue of the design coordination that I raised a moment ago, we’ll be formulating a set of design guidelines, which will serve as the basis for design. How the facilities relate to and interact with their surroundings is really the subject of a lot of those guidelines, things like the public realm, streetscape design, building orientation, the character, materials of buildings, and so on. These will be generated over approximately the next year and incorporated into the RFPs. You can see we have what we’re calling here a “Design Advisory Group” that includes a number of agencies, as well as, excuse me, the representation from the Borough Presidents and the Speaker of the City Council, who will be seeing, reviewing those design guidelines and providing input before they’re included in the RFPs. Did want to note that design guidelines are not new to the city. They’ve, in fact, been created, for example, in the disposition of city property by the Economic Development Corporation and others. One good example is the development of design guidelines for the Seward Park disposition. And, of course, you can see some of the emerging results of the design guidelines being incorporated in those RFPs. We also saw those in the development of the Hunter’s Point South design guidelines. We should actually be really referencing the buildings and the Hunter’s Point South guidelines that have governed the way that those buildings have been disposed of and developed, but that’s an example of us having used design guidelines in the past. So the design guidelines that I’m referencing will form the basis of designs that will be submitted by design builders, and then we’ll use those designs as a basis for selection and then hold the design builders to those designs. So the design guidelines are really critical for ensuring good design. And with that, it’s a good transition to a discussion by Beverly Pryor, from our program management consultant, about how, during that process of evaluation, selection, and then city oversight of the design and construction process, will be ensuring design excellence.
Thank you, Jamie. Good afternoon, Chair Lago and Commissioners. I’m Beverly Pryor. I’m a Fellow of the American Institute of Architects, and I’ve really focused my career on public projects, and my specialty has been justice projects. I’ve been based in California. I think it’s a little unusual, maybe, for a program manager to be an architect, but in this situation of design-build, it completely makes sense to me, given my experience for 25 years working on design-build projects, both on the design builder side and on the owner’s side in setting up the documentation to procure design-build services. In the last five years, I’ve worked on about $5 billion worth of high-rise urban jail projects that are being delivered as design-build. Like you, I’ve served on a number of commissions in San Francisco, where I’ve lived and worked for until now, and I have served on the Arts Commission and was on their Civic Design Review Committee. So I have an appreciation for the concerns that you may have about, you know, design build, and can you get excellent design, design excellence, using the design-build methodology? I think there’s a feeling that, well, let me start by talking about what is design excellence, because what’s excellent design in California, in a suburban community, is going to be very different than what design excellence is in New York City, in your boroughs. So it’s really, you have to think of it in terms of what its purpose is, what the time is, what the place is, and see design excellence as a commitment to the values of our culture. So I guess I advance the slides. So then what about achieving design excellence through design build? And I know that there’s this fear, and, you know, it’s healthy to have a fear, that there’s a potential that, once the design builder is selected, it becomes driven by the builder’s perspective, it gets driven to the bottom line, and you’re not going to have the control, and you’re going to have to lose that control through design build. So I want to start by sharing that, and that’s why I shared that, you know, it’s, design excellence can take on many meetings, but it’s really up to us, the city, to define what design excellence is for it, and to be able to then establish guidelines that will deliver that to you. I want to show a few examples. Maybe I’ll start by saying that, in the private world, design build might not be called design build, it might be called development, but many of, in the private world, design and construction is done in a partnership between the builder and the architect team. So there’s a lot of design build that’s happened in this city, maybe not called that. In the public realm, in New York City, we’ve got the Jacob Javits Center. It’s not a city project, but it is in the city, it is high-rise, and it is under construction, and one could say this is design excellence, time will tell. LaGuardia International Airport is also doing a major redevelopment project that is procured as a design-build project. Taking you outside of New York and into more of the justice realm, there’ve been a number of courthouses, and as well as other projects that have been done, design-build. I think one of the showcase projects is the Long Beach Courthouse in California, which has many features of high-quality design. Another recent project in Los Angeles area is the U.S. Federal Courthouse, designed by SOM, with cart construction. And I show this project, which I know, if you look at this and you say, “This has nothing to do with New York City,” it’s in Bakersfield, California, which is the Central Valley. It’s pretty flat, and it’s pretty low-rise. But I bring this one in because this was part of the federal government’s, GSA’s, Design Excellence Program. It’s a two courtroom courthouse. It is, the story that goes with it, which is not for today, but if somebody wanted to hear the story that goes with it, it’s an amazing partnership between the design team, the builder, and their subcontractors in finding ways to make, on a very low budget, concrete panels that have the elegance that you can see here. There was so much attention to detail that got generated, and it really started with the federal government saying, “We want design excellence, here’s our criteria,” and then the design builder and the, working together for, on a low budget, to create something very elegant and beautiful. So what strategies, as Jamie alluded to, a few of those, strategies that can be used to assure design excellence, and I’ll start with this honeycomb pattern, the scoping criteria at the bottom there, that’s, we’re talking about design guidelines, there will be a basis of design that establishes the design criteria. You know, when you think about design excellence, for me, these days, it’s, to me, it’s much more than when I was going to school, when it was postmodern and it was all about facadeism. It’s, to me, design excellence can and should also be about how that building functions in a world of sustainability and environmental and community consciousness. So it’s like setting that criteria is the first, because that will be the criteria that the design builder is judged against. Then there’s the selection criteria. So that’s the next one up in the dark squares there, or whatever those are, hexagons. The selection criteria, and I’ve been on design-build teams, the first thing you do is you look at the selection criteria and you say, “How are we going to get the most points possible?” And you think about lead, and, you know, lead certified, lead silver, lead gold. Gold, I think that was one of the brilliant things of the U.S. Green Building Council, is that they made it a game. They said, “Look, there’s points, you can achieve them, how are you going to go for that?” This is what the design builders do, they figure out what they need to do to win that project. So if you make a point of certain points or a certain percent of the score being associated with design excellence, they will play toward that. So, and there can be, let’s go into the next one of the dark hexagons, which is the expanded design excellence definition. The city has some basic standards for design excellence, but you can say, “For this project in this borough, there’s these expanded requirements that we’re asking for you to achieve.” So one, again, that will get the attention, and in their submittal, they need to talk about how they’re addressing those different aspects. And then the fourth part is to be an owner of choice in order to attract the best, because I’ll tell you, design build as a process for the industry is not a cheap process, it requires a lot of resources to pursue it. So how, you know, design builders will look at what the owner is putting out and basically say, “This looks too risky to me, I think I’m going to step away,” especially if there are a number of other interesting, big, solid projects that are going on at the same time. So how do you, how do you attract the quality that you want to your team? And there are strategies that you can do to, start by listening to the industry, because it is a partnership. It is a partnership between not just the designer and the builder, but the owner. So recognizing that, having the different paradigm, the different mental model for what design build is, is a very important aspect of your achieving design excellence. I’m showing here an example of a design-build high-rise jail RFP, and there was, you know, this is, we took away the points and the percents that would then add up into selection, but there were significant number of requirements in this tab 12, in terms of their conceptual plans and their other deliverables, there was a focus there. This is an example of a design-build high-rise jail proposal. This was a rendering, there’s a few renderings here, just to kind of give the highlight of what this concept was, a rendered site plan, there’s a lot of stories that go with the different aspects of this, and in terms of what they were achieving and bringing to the project sponsor, a view of it relative to other buildings on the skyline, and attention to what was going on in the public realm, in the public realm. And then there’s one other project I’d like to share with you, and I’ll tell you why I’m sharing this with you in a moment, because if you look at this site, it has nothing to do with Rikers, and it has, or the off-Rikers, it has nothing to do with your boroughs. It looks like a community college campus, and that was one of their design criteria. They wanted this to actually feel non-jail-like, and they wanted the women in this facility to actually walk to the dining area like you do on a college campus. They wanted to normalize the environment as much as possible and bring quality and care to it. It was being done in a two-phase program, because they didn’t have, it was a quarter of a million dol, sorry, a quarter of a billion-dollar program, or just Phase 1, and they didn’t feel they could achieve all of that $250 million in both phases. So they divided it out, they were going to get another $100 million for the next phase. They, and I’ll just kind of flash through a few of the finished pictures, you can see, this is the main entrance here, this definitely has a feeling of a California suburban community college campus. This is the dining area where the people in detention, as well as the staff, all went to this central dining area. The campus had outdoor amphitheater, which then turned into big opportunities for movie nights and other activities. But, so why am I sharing this with you? Again, I mentioned that the design builders, they got to strategize, how are we going to win this project? So even though the criteria was all about the quality of the environment and the impact of the environment and the experience of this, for the staff and for the people in detention, one of the design-build teams decided to fit both phases into the $250 million budget. So that was their strategy, and they thought, “How could we lose? We’re going to surprise them, we’re going to say, ‘Look, you can get this all in one phase.’” However, in that process, they stripped down a lot of the criteria that the county was seeking. They were not selected, they protested, they felt like, “Look, it’s in the public interest, the use of dollars, you’re getting that many more beds and that much more functionality with this option that we’re putting forward,” and the county had to really think about it. And, but basically, they stuck to their guns, and they said, “Look, this was, this was our criteria, this is what we cared about, this is the way the points went, and this is the team that was selected.” So I share that with you as a reflection on the value of having this criteria, and, you know, there will be confidential meetings that happen, there will be all kinds of opportunities to reemphasize for the design-build teams that are competing for this work, the design excellence criteria that you’re seeking, the city is seeking. Thank you.
Is that the end of the presentation?
Yes, it is.
Great. Thanks so much for doing this. I also want to note that the department is already working with Jamie Beverley, the entire team, on this, and the team that is working on it from the department is a combination of the four affected borough offices and our urban design team, and they’re working on the standard considerations that we have, the massing of the building, having a monumental entry that is both welcoming people and gives a sense of the civic importance of the space, activating streetscapes. And to make it a little bit more granular, in the Bronx, we’re looking at how to move the massing closer to the Bruckner and further away from a residential neighborhood in Brooklyn, looking at how we can activate the Atlantic Avenue retail frontage of the building. And in Manhattan, we think it’s especially important to recognize the importance of Columbus Park as the heart of the Chinatown neighborhood, and this work will continue. We were very pleased by the receptivity of the team that you have here today to working with us, even at this very early phase and in a design-build setting, on these factors, on these facets of the project that are the core remit of the Commission. And with that, I’ll turn it over for questions. Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you. Two questions. First, with regard to the timeline, how much will design bill save in time in contrast to, I guess if you did it via Wicks Law? How much time do you anticipate saving by going DB?
Sure. So we haven’t scoped this particular project under both options, both design-bid-build and design-build, so it’s, I can’t say precisely, but our anticipation in seeking to have the legislation pass last year was that we would save between 12 and 24 months.
12 and 24 months, okay. On the criteria that Ms. Pryor just laid out, I just wanted to clarify, because I think you stated in your opening remarks that one of the virtues of this process is that it allowed you to design the project with the contractor or builder being a part of that process. But in responding initially to the design guidelines, is the, a part of the consideration going to be some aesthetic response? I mean, is the, is a design team expected to, or the contenders, are they expected to give you some schematic renderings around what they envision?
Yes, sir. Yeah, that’s right. I think what Beverly was saying was that it can be quite an arduous process for potential design builders to participate in, and one of the main reasons for that is that the RFP, which we will release, or the set of RFPs, which we would release for the different facilities, will seek for them to go and do a level of design in response to the design guidelines. And then that design is what, I think she was showing a sample set of criteria, that the designs that they submit will be the basis for evaluating their design, you know, the quality of their design, the demonstrated capacity that we see within it, and the responsiveness of the design to the design guidelines that have been established. So typically, there is quite a rigorous, you know, multi-month process of a number of design-build teams, who have formed up a whole team, multidisciplinary architects, engineers, landscape architects, cost estimators, financial analysts, you know, sort of environmental review folks, who’ve all come together and submit a design as part of their response to the RFP.
And lastly, and I know, you know, there are always unforeseen circumstances, but ideally, do you plan to initiate construction on, of each site simultaneously?
It’s a little early for us to say that, and, I mean, I would sort of refer you back to the EIS and the construction plans that are within the EIS. So we’re still figuring out, now that we have this program management consulting expertise, we’re still figuring out what the right way is to phase and sequence, there’s a lot of variables in play. And I should say that a lot of that, you know, certainly will be done with the City Planning Department, but also with the Department of Correction, Correctional Health Services, the Mayor’s Office of Criminal Justice, because it’s not just a construction project, we also have to figure out how to, we have two facilities that are occupied, we have to figure out how to swing those facilities, and then we have to figure out how to sequence so that we’ll be able to close Rikers on the timeline that we’ve established. So, hard to answer it yet.
Thank you.
I’ll also note that the project management team has been on board for, what, a month at this point?
I’d say roughly, yeah. Right, I think 45 days.
Okay.
They just received their 40-day deliverable, so, yeah.
Commissioner Deloos.
Thank you for the presentation, Jamie and Beverly. You know, I think it’s exciting, honestly, that design build is going to be used in this way to achieve, I think, a goal that many folks
this way to achieve, I think, a goal that many folks in the city believe is long overdue in bringing the level of, I think, respect and dignity to everyone, and having the facilities reflect that as part of that process. I guess the questions I have are some of the things that you kind of just briefly touched on, Jamie, and that is, like, is there going to be one single RFP for the three sites? Are there three individual RFPs? Given the overlap that I see in the timeline between, you know, the initial parts of procurement and the design input through the Design Advisory Group, and then ULP, where do you see those things informing each other? Like, what are the key moments in time where you're ensuring that they inform each other? Could you maybe walk through that a little bit so we have a, like, a little more detailed sense of it?
Sure, absolutely. And I know that the timeline is quite high-level, because frankly, that's where we are at the moment, but I'll just pull it up because it's a useful reference. So as I mentioned to the Vice Chair, we're not at the place where we can set in stone any clear intentions about the ordering of the procurement. I think it is, it is very unlikely that we would package multiple sites within a single RFP, just because frankly, of the scale. I mean, these are, these are very significant projects. And of course, there's not necessarily any major economies of scale to be gained by one design builder to be building a facility in two locations. So I think it is, it is very likely that we have, you know, at least one RFP for each site. We also, I should mention, the first step in this is to pre-qualify, so to put what is called a request for qualifications. That could likely be one, because it sort of brings in the whole potential population of respondents, but then most likely, we're breaking it up into individual sites. I think you were asking about the sequencing of timing. Again, things are not set, and we're certainly waiting and deferring to the commission and the City Council on the ULP application. So, you know, certainly no significant capital planning decisions, you know, would be made prior to that set of decisions. We do anticipate at the moment that we would put out the RFPs, as is reflected here, sort of in the late, the sort of later end of 2019 and through 2020. And so at the chair's request and direction, we've established this Design Advisory Group so that there can be input into the design. They are going to meet quarterly, and so at the moment, we did have the opportunity to hold a kickoff meeting with them last week to get things going. We anticipate they would meet quarterly roughly for the next year, and at the moment, we're hopeful that at that point, we'll have the design guidelines finalized to be included in the RFPs.
And if I would just note that this Design Advisory Group is building upon work that has already been done as part of the preparation for the BPG.
Yes, thank you. May I just note, thank you, Chair, the Justice Implementation Task Force Design Working Group, the Neighborhood Advisory Group inputs, the master plan itself, which was the basis for the ULP application, and then any number of significant exercises that have been undertaken in the last years. One was by the Van Allen Institute, for example, the work of the Lippman Commission that informs the design aspirations here.
You actually just, if I may, mention one thing that I was going to ask about in the Community Outreach and Engagement line. So what will become of the Neighborhood Advisory Groups as this process moves forward? And in general, what's the vision for how community will be engaged throughout the process?
So part of that question, or actually, the main bulk of that question, I would actually defer to the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice and the Department of Correction, you know, who are really leading that effort. Just other than to say, DDC has the capacity to continue community engagement in whatever respects are required.
Commissioner, please.
Hi, Jamie. A few questions, actually. I had the community engagement question as well. I think it would be important for us to know that and have some insight on what the plans are. So if there's any way to get us more information, that'd be helpful. The other is, you know, looking at these examples and acknowledging that New York is a little bit of a different animal, you know, the importance of the ground-floor plane will be particularly critical in neighborhoods where you have a good amount of density around them. I know we've mentioned Atlantic, and everybody recognizes that, you know, we do not want dead space on the ground floor of Atlantic, but I think the same holds for the others. And these examples, at least in the images, don't seem to show much engagement on that ground floor. You know, to what degree is that space compromised by the activities that go on by the fact that it's a jail? And, you know, how can we ensure that through this process, we are able to create ground-floor space that can accommodate amenities, services, retail, that would make it feel less like a jail, which I think is a really important part of this?
Sure. So I think that's, it's a very good point that, and I think Beverley was open in saying that despite the fact that she hails from the West Coast, she recognizes that some of those examples don't look like New York, because a lot of those places just don't engage with the, the ground floor doesn't engage with the outside in any building. So my understanding, and again, I just want to qualify that DDC is not the lead applicant for the ULP and has not led the master plan effort, where a lot of these details can be found. But my understanding is that each of the proposed facilities has given consideration to ground-floor activation, that there are programmatic elements in each facility that are reserved for community facilities. In some cases, they may be facilities that meet the needs of the surrounding community in terms of health services, in terms of community services. In other cases, you referenced the Brooklyn example, they may likely be retail, you know, the sort of different components that are able to provide that neighborhood activation, and that will certainly be part of the project.
So for clarification, are, is DDC in charge of establishing the design guidelines?
We are, yes.
Okay. So then I would think that, you know, establishing the guidelines that inform that space is part of that. I would point to a resource that was developed with HPD and the Design Trust for Public Space called Laying the Groundwork, which is a set of design guidelines for retail spaces within HPD spaces. But, you know, the guidelines themselves remain, you know, a good resource for consideration at this location as well.
Thank you. Yeah, that's very helpful. We'll make sure that we've incorporated that.
Commissioner Edie.
Yeah, hi. Thank you. I just want to understand a little better, once again, the design guidelines, the output there will be part of the RFPs at some point, so they'll have to be completed before the individual RFPs are presented, correct?
Yes.
And if I understood correctly, I thought you said the design guidelines won't be done for another year? So that pushes us into 2020, then issuing the RFPs?
Yes, that's right. And again, the timeframe, these are very tentative timeframes at the moment, but as is sort of reflected in the schedule that we're looking at on the slide, we have procurement proceeding from the, sort of, this part of 2019 through 2021, before we've awarded contracts. And so we wouldn't anticipate issuing the RFPs until the, sort of, second, third quarter of next year.
Got it. And with procurement, you're referring to even the RFQ, which you can do before the guidelines are complete, correct?
That's right. Yeah, we would hope to get the RFQ out in 2019.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Other questions? These might be more questions from Ms. Pryor. I wondered if we know of any examples of design-build having been used for a jail?
Well, the San Diego County one that I just showed you, that's a jail.
Oh, okay.
And, and yes, there's been juvenile facilities that have been design-built, as well as jails.
On the San Diego one, I would note that that does not look like New York City community colleges.
No, I, that's right. I agree.
Have, what is the tallest jail that you're aware of?
Well, the one that I showed, let's just go quickly to that. This is a jail, a proposed jail.
Are you at liberty to say in what city?
Yeah, Los Angeles.
Los Angeles, okay. How many stories would that be?
It's probably around 20, 25.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, in having a discussion with Commissioner Bernie, who couldn't be here today, and one of the four architects on the commission, he had noted that one of the key factors he's seen in design-build is the weighting that is put on the design. And he noted that having a 30% weighting for design versus 20% could lead to a very different calculus. I think it would be of interest as it evolves. I'll probably be inviting Jamie to come back again to give us a sense of where design, how heavily the thumb is on the scale of design in this process.
Absolutely. I could offer something anecdotal, which is that I know someone who was, has, from an owner perspective, has been using design-build for a while, and he said when they used to have, price was only 20% of the criteria, they were getting much better proposals. And then somebody at some point said, well, why don't we make price 30%? And when they went to 30%, there was a marked decrease in the quality of the design. So you're absolutely right. It's an important factor to get right.
Yes, Commissioner Ramperchad.
Thank you for the presentation. I was just wondering, have you had a chance to visit the four locations?
I've been out to each of the four locations, yes.
Okay.
And I will again, I'm sure.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Now, I was just mentioning my colleague, and that's the West Coast, obviously, but it looks very much like a luxury condo, just completed on West Street. I'm just wondering, it looks like, again, from the examples that you've shown, is the philosophy within the design community as it relates to penal institutions, are you moving away from the stigma of penal institutions? And is it that these buildings should be indistinguishable from other public facilities? I'm just wondering, is there a guiding philosophy going on?
I, well, when they become an urban facility and they're in, so there has been a complete shift in philosophy over the last 10-plus years, as we're realizing that, one, the people in facilities are individuals, and they have, they might have trauma in their life, and they might have substance use disorder, or mental health issues, or any number of things. And that in most cases, they're going to end up back in the community. So it's like, you know, if we're responsible to a certain extent for, one, people are coming in, but then how are they going out? Are they in a better place to become a productive citizen, and in a better place to find care and to keep moving themselves in a positive direction? So that's a major driver. And the old jails definitely had a different philosophy. There were no space for programs, no focus on treatment. It was basically, you know, you're in this space, and you do your time, and then you leave. So, and then in terms of how they look, you know, it's interesting to say that one looks like a luxury condo, and yeah, it kind of does. It's also, though, the sense that they are civic buildings, and that they should have a civic presence, and that they should be, in a way, a reflection of just what we were talking about, the values of our society. So, you know, how do we value a system that is a necessary part of our society? And at the same time, you know, one that we, I don't want to say that we don't want to celebrate it, but it's one that we, you know, need to put, you know, give its proper due. So.
Thank you.
Commissioner Edie.
You know, thinking about this further, and thinking about the fact that each of the respondents will be teams of firms, and in some cases, you may like the design in one proposal, and, or the architecture firm, and the other firm, other team might have a better contractor. Are you maintaining any level of flexibility to mix and match at some point down the road?
So it's an excellent question. There are strategies, and Marcus, you might add into this, but there are strategies where if you like a design of one of the design builders more, but you actually feel the other one is, could deliver better, they call it an alternate technical concept. And you actually can say at some point, you know, we'd like you to move in this other direction. And I will say, I'm glad you brought that up about liking a team better, because in this design-build concept, different than design-bid-build, you are partnering with that team, and you are developing it together. And so you want people that can work in this new model, and people that are maybe really excellent at the design-bid-build, low bid, you know, you know, push, 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 push against each other mode, might not be the right ones for this new model. And so you're, you want to be, that's a really important part of your selection, is, you know, how are we going to work together over time?
Other questions? Well, thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Look forward to future ones as this unfolds.
Thank you very much, as do we.
Welcome to the City Planning Commission Review Session for Monday, June 3, 2019. The time is 1:49 PM. The first item on our agenda is a certification of a special permit and zoning text amendment in Queens Community District 4. Our presenter is Kathy Ko.
The applicant is the LSS Leasing Limited Liability Company, and they're requesting two actions at the property located at 5817 Junction Boulevard in Corona, Queens. The actions requested are a special permit pursuant to Section 74512 of the zoning resolution to permit a public parking garage with more than 150 spaces in a C44 district, as well as a zoning text amendment to Section 74512 to allow for a reduction in the number of required reservoir spaces. The project area is in north-central Queens, Community District 4, in the neighborhood of Corona. The project area is located on the same block as La Frac City, which is a large residential development complex consisting of 20 16-story residential towers that's under common ownership by the applicant. There's also several regional malls in the area. The southern portion of the block is adjacent to Interstate 495 or the Long Island Expressway, and the area is accessed by the M&amp;R subway lines with two stations near the project area along Queens Boulevard. The Woodhaven Boulevard stations located approximately three blocks west of the project area, and the 63rd Drive Rego Park Station is located about two blocks south of the project area. There's also a number of bus lines that run through the surrounding area. The project area is coterminous with the zoning lot, and the black dotted line here indicates the existing parking garage, a small post office, and a diner and coffee shop. The surrounding area has a mix of residential, community facility, and commercial uses. South and west of the project area, Regional Destination Malls are located along Queens Boulevard, including Queen Center Mall, Queens Place Mall, and Rego Center Mall. Local retail uses are surrounded north and east of the project area along 57th Street and 99th Street. In addition to La Frac City, the surrounding area has a diverse housing stock, which include two-to-three-story residences, seven-story multifamily elevator buildings with community facility uses on the ground floor. And south of the project area includes multiple 15- to 17-story residential buildings. The project area has frontage on Horace Harding Expressway and Junction Boulevard, and totals approximately 212,402 square feet. South of the project area is the Long Island Expressway, which creates an overpass as it crosses over Junction Boulevard. The lot located on the corner of Junction Boulevard and Horace Harding Expressway contains a 20-story office building primarily occupied by city, state, and federal agencies. The lot fronting to north side of Horace Harding Expressway is comprised of a six-story office building that is also occupied by government agencies. The existing two-story public garage fronts Junction Boulevard, which you can see in this image with the white roof, and contains 706 parking spaces on three levels, including the roof, with public and accessory parking spaces. The photos here show the site along Horace Harding Expressway, which is essentially a service road for the LIE. service road for the LIE. Photo one is a view of the six-story office building, and you can see the 20-story office building just behind it. Photo two, again, shows the Horace Harding Expressway with the project area to the right. And photo three is a view of one of two entrances into the project area. This 45-foot curb cut provides access into and out of the project area and is primarily used by city agency vehicles and truck deliveries for the diner and post office. A gate with a sensor for office tenants to tap a key card for entry is located approximately 244 feet beyond the curb cut. The slide shows views of the project area along Junction Boulevard. And photo four is a view of the 20-story office building. Photo five is a view of the main entrance and the Silver Spoon diner adjacent to it, and you can see the La Frac City Towers just behind it. And view six is a view of the main entrance at the signalized intersection of, or signalized intersection of Junction Boulevard and 59th Avenue. This entrance is used by both the public and office building tenants. And there is a 30-foot curb cut that provides access into and out of the garage with two 11-foot lanes, exit lanes, and one 12-foot entrance lane. You can also see the post office to the right of the garage in this photo. So for prior actions, in 1966, the CPC approved a special permit pursuant to 74512 to permit the development of a two-story public parking garage with capacity for 870 parking spaces. In 1967, the CPC approved the applicant's request to modify the original special permit. The amended special permit was subject to a term of 50 years, which expired on January 11, 2018. So the existing public parking garage was then built in 1968 upon approval of that special permit, and it totals approximately 211,010 square feet. The image to the right shows the existing ground-level site plan of the zoning lot with the garage highlighted in red, and other uses on the lot, which include the two office buildings, the post office and the diner. There's a total of 706 parking spaces with 356 self-park spaces located on the ground and second floors, and 350 spaces located on the roof. Office tenants include the New York City Police Department, the U.S. Postal Office, the Internal Revenue Service, and the New York City Department of Environmental Protection, who has exclusive access to the 350 spaces located on the roof. On the ground level, there are 162 self-park spaces. And you'll also note here that the primary entrance is on Junction Boulevard, indicated by the yellow arrow, primarily used by the office and office tenants and the public. And the secondary entrance on Horace Harding is primarily used by New York City DEP. The second level of the plan includes 194 self-parking spaces, and each level is accessed by vehicular ramps. And the roof level of the garage contains 350 parking spaces used exclusively by DEP's fleet of vehicles. The applicant proposes two actions. The first is a text amendment to Section 74512 to allow for a reduction of reservoir spaces set forth in Finding C of the section for previously approved existing public parking garages located in a C-44 district in Queens Community District 4. In lieu of meeting Finding C, the proposed text would then require a new finding that the previously permitted parking facility would not adversely impact the surrounding traffic network. In addition, the applicant proposes a special permit pursuant to Section 74512 to permit a public parking garage with more than 150 spaces in a C-44 district. The section also states that the commission may permit some such spaces to be located on the roof of the public garage, or may permit floor space up to a height of 23 feet above curb level to be exempted from the definition of floor area. And these terms and waivers were part of the previously approved special permit. As a condition of permitting such use, the commission is to make the following findings, which generally ensure that the use would not adversely impact local traffic and not impair the essential character of the neighborhood. Again, Finding C here is not applicable in this application due to the proposed text amendment. To meet the finding of this new special, of this special permit, a traffic study was conducted in February 2018 during peak hours. It focused on both parking count data and queuing spaces at the Junction Boulevard entrance to determine the number of vehicles that potentially back up onto Junction Boulevard. This entrance is used by both the public and office tenants. Members of the public must press a button at the access gate to obtain a ticket, and office tenants use a key card to scan for entry at the access gate. Based on observations of this entrance, existing conditions do not result in vehicles backing up onto Junction Boulevard. No more than two vehicles were ever observed waiting to enter the garage at this entrance. Therefore, providing two queuing spaces between the street line and the access gate is sufficient to meet the demand of inbound vehicles while avoiding the creation of any serious traffic congestion or inhibiting traffic and pedestrian flow in the surrounding area. In conclusion, the proposed actions include a special permit pursuant to Section 74512 to permit a public parking garage with more than 150 spaces in a C-44 district, and a zoning text amendment to Section 74512 to allow for a reduction in the number of required reservoir spaces for previously approved public parking garages located in a C-44 district in Queens Community District 4. Approval of the proposed actions would allow for the continued use of the existing public parking garage. It would not facilitate any new development, enlargement, or alteration of the garage except for minor additions to the roof screening. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions. Commissioner Edie.
Hi. I am familiar with this intersection, and I have a question on the reservoir spaces. I understand that Philip Habib and Associates found that during their review that they only noticed two cars at most lining up during a February. And this intersection is really quite challenged. There is a diner with an entrance there, there's a grocery store on the other side, and there's, and you can even see it now. There, on a busy day, there are tons of pedestrians that are walking in front of this back and forth. And so I guess the question that I have, which I don't know if it's really resolved, if that is, you know, if there are times where we have to perhaps be on the safe, play it safe, where we might want a few more, you're going from 10 to two reservoir spaces, correct?
Yes.
Where we wouldn't want to be in a situation where we have three or four cars waiting because they would absolutely back into a space that is heavily utilized by pedestrians. So I do raise that as a concern.
Sure. So while the traffic study concluded that two were required based on their observations, there is space for more. So the applicant is open to providing up to four, as four, there's ample room to fit for, depending on what comes out of public review. But for now, they included two in the site plan because that's, that was based on the conclusions of the traffic study.
Okay. I would recommend.
Brian, do you want to clarify?
Oh, I was going to say that my understanding is that this garage has been operating like this for a very long time, and so there actually isn't a reduction in the number of existent reservoir spaces. Is that correct, Kathy? So the number of reservoir spaces in terms of there's four to, hasn't changed and wouldn't change in the future.
So they were operating inappropriately, or?
Yeah, this is a situation where the special permit lapsed. Its original term was 50 years. And so it's both a re-upping of it, and then second, we've been told that since the outset, it has been operating as is. And so the thought was with the issuance of a new special permit, they requested that we memorialize what in fact has been occurring.
I would, yeah, I would be surprised if they didn't have every once in a while a little bit of a backup. I understand it's a very limited period of time, February. I don't know if during the holidays, we end up seeing more. We have major malls, you know, one block to the south, you know, one block to the east or west. So it's just a question that I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Delaues.
I think this could be related. You know, I wonder, for instance, based on the type of leasing that happens and the fact that the parking is kind of like in bulk to institutional, to institutions, whether that changes the nature of the queuing and the entrance. And I guess my concern or question would be like, how long are those leases in place with the IRS, with DEP, with whoever, the postal service? And, you know, in the event that that were to change, I could see that changing the nature of the queuing in the future. And I would want to have, I think, our recommendations speak to that, because the conditions might change and change the pattern of things. So with that, if I may, the other point I have is, you know, what other, since this garage has been in existence for so long, are there other requirements that a garage that would be going through the process today would be required to put in place? You know, bike parking comes to mind, electric vehicle charging, those kinds of things. And maybe you have some of that information. I'd be interested in that, and knowing just over the, over the years, what kind of violations or issues have come up for the garage when that comes back.
Sure. In terms of bike parking, they are providing bike parking. It's when you enter the garage, it's towards the left. And as far as, I'm sorry, electric vehicles, I believe they have charging stations on the roof, but I'll get back to you on whether or not they have that on the ground in second floors.
Other questions? Okay, the application is certified.
Thank you.
The second item on the agenda, page 36, is a minor modification of a previously approved special permit in Queens Community District 2. Our presenter is Blake Montieth.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is a private application to facilitate the development of a new mixed residential and commercial building in Long Island City, Community District 2, Queens. The owner of a development site at 2244 Jackson Avenue is applying to modify a previously approved special permit to legalize a partially constructed 48- and 42-story building. The project site is located in the Court Square neighborhood of Long Island City, in the special Long Island City mixed-use district, northwest of Sunnyside Yard, and about one to two blocks from the Court Square E, M, 7, and G subway platforms. The project, the project site is outlined here in red, and it includes the entirety of Block 86. The site is bounded by Jackson Avenue, Davis Street, Crane Street, and Sunnyside Yard. The surrounding area is highly mixed use with residential, commercial, industrial, and institutional uses close to the site. Construction for a new two-tower building is currently underway on the project site. The north tower, as you can see here, is on the Jackson Avenue side of the site, and the south tower is on the Sunnyside Yard side of the site. The elevated seven train runs on the northeastern edge of the site over Davis Street, and MoMA PS1 is one block southwest of the site on Jackson Avenue. The special Long Island City mixed-use district includes a very unique special permit applicable to two blocks in Long Island City. The special permit increases the maximum floor area ratio on these sites from five to eight, on the condition that the developers provide at least 20,000 square feet of public open space and a 250-space public parking garage. To meet these requirements, the special permit also allows for adjustments to underlying street wall and base height requirements. The city issued a special permit for this site in 2013 to allow for the development of a new building with two towers at 47 and 41 stories, including about 1,000 housing units, 50,000 square feet of retail space, space for artist studios, a 250-space public parking garage, and over 32,000 square feet of public open space. The approved open areas are highlighted here on this slide, looking at the site plan, with public open space provided along Davis Street and Sunnyside, and along the Sunnyside Yard edge of the site. There's also a proposed open space at the corner of Jackson Avenue and Crane Street. The building is nearing completion, and both towers have topped out or are near being topped out. During construction, the applicant made four sets of adjustments to the building to accommodate previously unknown site conditions and structural requirements. The applicant will require the City Planning Commission approval of these modifications in order to seek a certificate of occupancy. I'll briefly outline each set of modifications. First, the applicant moved a portion of the Davis Street street wall back two feet from Davis Street. The special district here would require that the street wall be built to the corner as of right, so the 2013 special permit allowed for the street wall to set back from Davis Street in order to, to provide a public open street, open space on that street. During construction, the applicant discovered subsurface conditions at this location that would make the originally proposed 15-foot setback infeasible. So setting back to 17 feet is more feasible under those conditions. Second, the applicant seeks to revise street wall setback waivers for the south tower lobby. The approved setback waiver beyond the maximum street wall setback is shown here in blue. The applicant doubled the thickness of the elevator core walls in the lobby, displacing the lobby circulation and program. So the applicant extended the lobby on the ground floor out towards Crane Street to expand this lobby space. The revised street wall waivers are shown here in blue, and the one-story expansion of the lobby is shown here in red. And these images show the interior changes to the lobby floor plan between 2013 and what they're proposing today that necessitated the change in the lobby space. The applicant also made small modifications to the roofs of both towers. On the north tower, the applicant increased the height of portions of the roof between about one foot and 6.4 feet to accommodate changes to the interior floor-to-floor heights. An adjustment to the approved, the approved street wall encroachment waiver would be required to allow for these changes. And similarly, on the south tower, the applicant increased the height of portions of the roof between 1.4 feet and 4.5 feet to accommodate changes to the interior floor-to-floor heights. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer your questions.
Questions from the commission. Commissioner Ramperchad.
I have a quick question. What was the structural issue? Is it the soil, the bearing capacity of the soil?
I can get back to you on more details, but it was an issue with the soil and the composition of the soil.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay, the application is certified.
Thank you.
The, the third item on the agenda, page 94, is a non-U-LAR post-referral of a City Planning Commission certification in Brooklyn Community District 13. Our presenter is Colin Lee.
Good afternoon. This is an application by Hashmi Imadudin and Baobaki &amp; Associates Engineering, PC, who seeks a CPC certification pursuant to 11341 to allow the underlying bulk regulations of the R6 zoning district to apply on certain corner lots in the Special Ocean Parkway District. This application will facilitate the development of a five-story house of worship and community facility approximately 11,500 square feet. The project is located in the Brighton Beach neighborhood in Brooklyn in Community District 13. The development site is in a R6 district in the Special Ocean Parkway District. R6 is a medium-density district with two different bulk regulations, height factor and quality housing regulations. Height factor regulations in this district have a maximum FAR of 2.43. Building height is governed by the sky exposure plane, which begins at 60 feet above the street line. And quality housing regulations on a narrow street in this district have a maximum FAR of 2.2 and a maximum height of 55 feet. And on a wide street, the maximum FAR is three with a maximum height of 75 feet. Also, in R6 districts, the maximum FAR for community facilities is 4.8. The Special Ocean Parkway District was created in 1977 to limit the spread of community facilities that present a threat to the surrounding residential character. This district limits both residential and community facility FAR to three in R6 districts. The area surrounding the development site is predominantly residential in character with pockets of commercial and community facility uses. Residential districts in the area vary from R4, R5, and R6. And the area is well-served by public transit. The B and the Q subway lines at Brighton Beach Station are located three blocks south of the development site, and the B4 and the B68 busters are within two blocks of the site. The proposed development site is located on the corner of Banner and Brighton Ave. The surrounding area is characterized by a variety of single and two-family homes and multifamily buildings. Majority of the buildings near the development site are two-story residential buildings, and in the greater surrounding area, there are many five-story and above. And looking at the map, along Banner Avenue, there are two buildings over five stories tall, just within a block of the development site. The area has a variety of community. The area has a variety of community facilities. Two of the houses of worship along Neptune Avenue function as a school, and all other community facilities in the area range from a nursing home, rehabilitation facility, daycares, and schools. Major roads in the development site include Ocean Parkway, Coney Island Avenue, the Belt Parkway, and all three roads are wide, over 100 feet or more. Local roads in the area include Banner Avenue, Brighton 8th Street, and Guider Avenue. Banner Avenue is a narrow street that is 60 feet wide, and directly east of the development site is a combination of Brighton 8th Street, Guider Avenue, Coney Island Avenue, and the Belt Parkway entrance ramp that creates over 400 feet of roadway and would be considered a wide street. The development site today sits on a vacant lot that is approximately 2,500 square feet. The applicant's former house of worship was demolished and the need for more space and a growing congregation. It was a part of the community since 1983. And these are some project area photos. In the top left is a corner of Brighton 8th Street and Banner Avenue, directly across from the site. And the top right is a view directly east of the development site, showing the roadway infrastructure from the Belt Parkway leading traffic to and from Banner and Coney Island Avenue. And the top left is a south view along Brighton 8th Street. The top right is a view towards Guider Avenue in the traffic triangle. And the bottom left is a view on Banner Avenue facing Brighton 8th Street. The proposed development will be a five-story, 70-foot-tall building at a FAR of 4.5, resulting in approximately 11,500 square feet. The building will also include a cellar that will be used for storage, three-fourths of assembly space, a multipurpose hall, and a caretaker's office. The development will not only be used as a house of worship, but also function as a community center and provide programs such as summer and after-school programs for the youth. And here is the site plan. And there will be two entrances along Banner Avenue and one entrance along Brighton 8th Street side. Five street trees will be planted, and no parking is required for houses of worship in the R6 district. And here is a neighborhood character diagram showing the proposed development and the surrounding buildings along Banner Avenue on the top. On the right side of the page, you can see a seven-story building, and on the left, you can see the roadway infrastructure. And on the bottom is the view along Brighton 8th Street. And I'll go over the findings. 11341 of the zoning resolution requires certification for community facility uses on certain corner lots in the Special Ocean Parkway District to exceed bulk regulations. These facilities are required to be located on a corner lot and have one lot line located along a wide street to be eligible for this certification. And as mentioned previously, the development site is located on a corner lot where the Brighton 8th Street lot line is along a wide street with the 400-plus feet of roadway from the lot line to Coney Island Avenue. Additionally, the community facility building is required to comply with the bulk regulations of Article 2, Chapter 4, specifically in the residential R6 district. The proposed development would be built to a 4.5 FAR, which complies with the bulk regulations of the R6 district, which allows 4.8 FAR for community facilities. And also, the scale of the proposed community facility building needs to be appropriate with the scale of the surrounding development. And within the surrounding area, there are many five-story and above buildings, and the majority are located on corner lots evenly distributed throughout the area. And this application was referred to Community Board 13 in Coney Island on March 4, 2019. The community board cannot vote on this application, but they can provide comments. The community board expressed that they were in favor of the development but had concerns regarding traffic and parking. Additionally, the applicant team were invited to present their proposal by Community Board 13. The meeting was held on April 15, and the community board expressed their concerns regarding traffic and parking. The applicants responded to their concerns by stating 75% of the congregants live within 3/4 of a mile from the development site, and they also explained that majority would take the bus or subway, and traffic and parking would not be an issue. And to facilitate the proposed development, the applicant seeks a CPC certification. Thank you.
Any questions from the Commissioner? Commissioner Rameshad.
Thank you for the presentation. I just asked that on their site plan, they at least put the width of the street for Brighton 8th Street? Because it just says "wide street." But for Banner Avenue, they put "narrow street" with the width at 60 feet, so if they can just include that. Okay, so, thank you.
Other questions? Then if I could ask for an assent by show of hands to grant the certification? Thank you.
Okay. I do want to note on item two that that was a non-ULP referral and not a certification. For future votes, staff have prepared reports for consideration later today on 515 West 18th Street, and Stephen's here to give us an update on that.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is a private application by Eighteenth High Line Associates LLC, which seeks a special permit to build a 180-space attendant accessory parking garage at 515 West 18th Street as part of an as-of-right mixed-use development in the West Chelsea neighborhood in Manhattan, Community District 4. The application was certified on January 28, and a public hearing was held on April 22. After discussions with the Commission and the department, and after receiving comments during the public review process, the applicant has submitted revised drawings reflecting a new design for the parking facility. This redesign includes a reduction in the total number of parking spaces from 180 to 110. That number includes the 41 as-of-right spaces. This is an over 50% decrease in the number of requested parking spaces above the as-of-right spaces from 139 to 69. There's a wider array of uses in the cellar, including new public bicycle parking at $5 a day and residential and building storage. And the design includes an improved garage layout, including the removal of most of the double-height stackers that were proposed for the garage. Now, the applicant stated at the public hearing that the original 180 parking spaces proposed for the project was solely based on the amount of square footage available in the below-grade space after environmental remediation and not a desire to have one parking space per one dwelling unit. Just want to take you through the redesigned. This is the ground floor. There are no changes to the ground floor of the building. This is the original site plan. Cars would head down the ramp and stop at one of the 10 reservoir spaces where an attendant would be waiting. Under the original garage plan, there would be 44 stackers. They're marked here in these rectangle boxes. Those are all stackers. Now, the redesign. Under the revised garage plan, there are now 110 parking spaces, including nine stackers down from the 44. The two areas sectioned off as non-parking areas are outlined in red, as you can see there and there, as well as the new bicycle parking, which is located right there next to the attendant facility where the attendant booth is. This bike parking is in addition to the bicycle parking that's required for the residential building. So in addition to the revised filings, the applicant submitted a revised residential growth parking study showing a parking ratio of 5%, down from the original 8%. And the applicant states that the parking spaces are intended to be used by residents of the building and the neighborhood. Now, regarding the changes, the department is pleased with the improved design of the garage and believes that the redesign is a more suitable use of space for a predominantly residential building in West Chelsea and that the reduction of parking spaces is more appropriate due to recent development trends that have changed the character of the area and the streetscape. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Just a comment. I'm thrilled to see the response from the developer on this. I think reducing parking at this location is the right policy position for us as well. So, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, thank you.
Right. Staff have also prepared reports for 784 Cortlandt Avenue, 3801 23rd Avenue rezoning, and the Casino Center rezoning, which will be as modified. Also for consideration later today, 5545 Arlington Avenue in Bronx CD8. 68 Butterworth Avenue will be laid over. Note that. 347 Flag Place will be still scheduled for vote, and 866 Stafford Avenue also scheduled for vote. For post-hearing follow-up, there was a hearing two weeks ago on the POPS rule change. Further questions on that? Didn't think so. All right. 273 Avenue U rezoning. 201, 207 7th Avenue. I believe Annie is here.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I just wanted to make sure that everyone saw that there was a letter from HPD that was included in your package regarding the 201, 207 7th Avenue UDAP. And it mostly focuses on the questions that were raised at the hearing regards to extending the affordability terms longer than the 40-year regulatory agreement. And I won't go through all of their notes here because they can explain it much more eloquently than I can, especially with this cold. But it is, you know, they do answer the questions regarding the resale of units and the incorporation document limits of the 165% AMI in perpetuity. And they also, you know, explain some of their other mechanisms, such as the flip-tax profit sharing, which, you know, determines the amount of profit that a seller can recognize from the sale over time. I'd be happy to, you know, take down any questions you have now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And feel better.
Okay. And 1 Penn Plaza also scheduled post-hearing. Ezra's here.
All right, good afternoon, everyone. I wanted to make sure that everyone got to see a letter from the applicant where they responded to outstanding issues on a point-by-point basis. And the applicant is agreeing to two major areas of discussion. First, the applicant's agreeing to provide ADA access elevator, the new Penn Station entrance off of West 34th Street. And they are amending their application to request a term limit of 20 years for the nighttime closure authorization. We do plan to note in the CPC report that when a new authorization is being applied for at that future time after it expires, that factors and incidents within the surrounding area and immediate vicinity may be taken into consideration as well. There were also discussions at the public hearing surrounding a further redesign of the East Plaza. And the discussion was about having it include only movable tables and chairs. And the applicant does know that they won't be pursuing that option. The Plaza standards require a variety of fixed and movable seating, and this reflects the department's belief that a mix of seating, including fixed bench and social seating, is vital to successfully activating public spaces. It's important to provide users with a choice of seating types to accommodate their preferences and comfort or materiality. And so the design, as it's proposed, does provide a good mix of seating options, including backed and backless bench seating, and also includes 66 movable chairs and 22 tables. So the department does believe there's no shortage of movable options. Any questions?
Questions? Then I'll just note that in this matter, like the past matter, I think they show the benefit of the public review process, the commission's questioning. And in each instance, I want to commend the Manhattan Office and also the applicants for their willingness to work through some thorny issues and end up with better projects. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, Commissioner Edie.
Just one quick question came to my mind. The benches, do they have dividers? Or will they be, do we allow for dividers in the benches?
They do not have dividers. I don't know off the top of my head whether they're permitted or not. I mean, we typically, from a design perspective, are not enthusiastic about defensive design mechanisms that are intended to prevent, you know, laying down on them. But that's not intended for this project.
Okay, thank you.
Do I understand correctly by dividers, it's like armrests or something that would prevent?
Or individual seats so that people don't lay down. You're correct.
Yeah, so this rendering up here illustrative, or sorry, illustrative plan shows what the arrangement of bench seating will look like. And some of those have backs and some of them are backless. And as I noted, there's a plethora of movable tables and chairs and a new food and beverage kiosk.
I guess my question really, do we preclude dividers? If the landlord were to have benches with dividers, do we preclude that?
Do you?
Our POPS regulations do allow dividers, but they have to be of minimal dimension. So we can get you the specs if you're interested.
As long as we leave it to the owner and we have the benches, so we have the seating, but they have the flexibility, I'm perfectly fine. Thank you.
Yes, good, thanks.
Other questions? Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so we are going to close the public review session. And thus concludes the public review session for Monday, May 3, 2019. The time is 2:28 PM. And we will open our special meeting. Okay.
Good afternoon, and welcome to our special meeting.
Yes, this is a City Planning Commission special meeting held at New York City City Planning Commission Hearing Room, Lower Concourse 120 Broadway. Today is Monday, June 3. I will now call the roll. Chair Lago.
Here.
Vice Chair Knuckles. Commissioner Bernie. Commissioner Capelli.
Here.
Commissioner Cirillo.
Here.
Commissioner De La Ouz.
Commissioner Duque.
Here.
Commissioner Edie.
Here.
Commissioner Knight.
Here.
Commissioner Levin.
Commissioner Marin.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Rameshad. A quorum is present. The first item is the approval of the minutes of public meeting of Wednesday, May 22, 2019.
On the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes approved.
Scheduling on calendar numbers 1 through 5, we have resolutions for adoption scheduling Wednesday, June 19, 2019, for a public hearing to be held at NYC City Planning Commission Hearing Room, Lower Concourse 120 Broadway.
On the resolution, all in favor? Opposed? The resolutions are adopted.
The next part of the calendar is the report section on page 5. Borough of the Bronx, calendar numbers 6 and 7, CD1. Calendar number 6, C190292HUX. Calendar number 7, C190293HAX. In the matter of applications for a UDAP designation, project approval concerning 784 Cortlandt Avenue and the Fourth Amendment to the Melrose Commons Urban Renewal Plan, Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirillo.
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ouz.
Yes.
Commissioner Duque.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rameshad. Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers 6 and 7. Borough of the Bronx, calendar numbers 8, 9, and 10. CD8, calendar number 8, N190348ZAX. Calendar number 9, N190349ZAX. Calendar number 10, N190350ZAX. In the matter of applications for the grant of authorizations concerning 5545 Arlington Avenue, Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirillo.
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ouz.
Yes.
Commissioner Duque.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rameshad. Calendar numbers 8, 9, and 10 have been adopted. Borough of Manhattan, calendar number 11, CD4, C190213ZSM. In the matter of an application for the grant of a special permit concerning 515 West 18th Street Garage for a favorable report on calendar... Street Garage for a favorable report on calendar number 11, Chair Lago.
Yes.
Commissioner Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirillo.
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ouz.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number 11. Borough of Queens, calendar number 12, CD1, C180315ZMQ. In the matter of an application for a zoning map amendment concerning 3801 23rd Avenue rezoning, for a favorable report on calendar number 12, Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirillo.
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ouz.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number 12. Borough of Queens, calendar numbers 13 and 14, CD7. Calendar number 13, C190202ZMQ. Calendar number 14, N190203ZRQ. In the matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments as amended concerning Casino Center rezoning, for favorable reports as amended on calendar numbers 3, 13, and 14, Chair Lago.
Yes.
Commissioner, Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirillo.
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ouz.
Yes, and I hope that the council looks at adding MIH Option 1 to the options.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Oh.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershad. Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers 13 and 14. Borough of Staten Island, calendar number 15 has been laid over. Borough of Staten Island, calendar number 16, CD3, N190351ZAR. In the matter of an application for the grant of an authorization concerning 347 Flag Place for adoption on calendar number 16, Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirillo.
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ouz.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Yes.
Calendar number 16 has been adopted. Calendar number 17, CD3, N190360RCR. In the matter of an application for a grant of a certification concerning 866 Stafford Avenue, an adoption of calendar number 17, Chair Lago.
Yes.
Commissioner, Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirillo.
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ouz.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Yes.
Calendar number 17 has been adopted.
And any other business before us?
No, there is not, Madam Chair.
So, our special meeting is closed. Have a good afternoon.
Thank you.[1785.78][1785.78][applause]